We need to order, we'll have a pledge and prayer led by our city planning director, Micah Scott.
Glad to lead it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and her God, invincible, the reason of justice.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your mercy and grace, and I just ask for your provision and guidance and leadership over us and over this city, in your name we pray.
Thank you, Micah, thank you. Thanks, we got the approval of the agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns about approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion, do we approve the agenda?
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item D, citizen comments, does anybody from the audience that would like to say a few words? Do they go in once, twice? So, okay, moving on. Item F, consent agenda, does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Are we, we're only allotted six fireworks?
Yes.
Do we have anybody that wants an?
Can we change it?
I, we changed it.
Did you increase it now?
I thought it was eight.
We changed that policy.
Do we have more than six one year?
We don't.
Can I review that?
We have six now.
Okay, can we review to make sure, because I know at one meeting?
We did, I think we changed it, but I'm not sure what we changed it to.
We changed it to they could be in church parking lots now.
Yes, they have more than ten parking spaces, that's allowed.
And then, I think we upped the number.
That's true.
I can't remember if it was eight or ten.
I think it was eight.
I think it was, I think we were talking ten, but I think we did eight.
But we definitely reiterated that it had to be with a local nonprofit match, it had to be local nonprofit.
Right.
But didn't the, but didn't the application only charge thirty-four hundred, is that right? What did we charge for the application?
Thirty.
Was it thirty-five?
I believe it's thirty-four.
Or thirty-four, did it get bumped up to ten? No, okay.
No, it was how many we allowed, was what we changed.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. Any questions? Any questions?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item H1, petitions for Arbor Creek, X3.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item H1, this is resolutions authorizing improvements for phase three of Arbor Creek. So, quick background, this is the first of three actions to be taken by the city council with the authorization of improvements. The second step will be the consideration of a resolution authorizing this initiation of bids for issuance of general obligation temporary notes. The final step will be the resolution ratifying the temporary note sale authorized in the second step. We saw step three back in February when it came to Arbor Creek, and the overages, I'm excuse me, overages for Trails End and for Big Arms, we saw that step three for those particular developments in February, but this is step one of three for Arbor Creek, phase three. Background, financial and legal considerations will be presented as a single item under H1A with analysis, recognition, action sections delineating each resolution consideration. Acceptance of the petition and consideration of improvements authorized in resolution can be taken in a single motion with a voice vote occurring after a motion and a second. So, the resolution accepts the petitions authorized as project issuance and temporary notes and constructs improvements for future bond issuances of the special assessment statutes. The petitioner is the sole property owner within the proposed improvement district and under KSA 126A04, the property owner has requested an NPL hearing or notice be given. A portion of the cost of improvements between the improvement district and city is to be assessed hundred percent against the improvement district and zero percent to be paid by the city at large. In event, all or part of lots or parcels of improvement district are replatted or ownership of single lot is or may be divided into or more parcels, assessment shall be recalculated, and this is what we call respread. On the basis of method of assessment set forth herein, all improvements are for Arbor Creek development, and the following slides outlines the lots and blocks that will be assessed. So, H1A, resolution authorizing water improvements, total amount for that will be ninety-eight thousand, and the lots and blocks. H1B is the resolution for the water main collector, petition is seventy-one thousand for these lots and blocks. H1C, authorizing sanitary sewer. H1D, authorizing paving. H1E, resolution authorizing paving collector, and H1F, authorizing the grading improvements. So, this is a general layout showing kind of which each phase is at right now, this is the phase one, this one was phase two, this is second edition, and then this is phase three. If you look at the phasing maps for those lots and blocks, for example, these ones, you're going to see the phasing maps look like this. Shows you which lots and blocks will be assessed for each improvement. So, the resolution accepts the petitions authorized as project issuance of temporary notes to construct improvements for future bond issuance under special assessment statutes. The petitioner is sole property owner within a proposed improvement district under KSA, as mentioned, the property owner has requested that no public hearing or notice be given. For those documents have been offered by Bond Council, Kevin Cowan, and Gilmore, and bound and reviewed by City Attorney Ryan Beck, who was asked for. So, we would go through each one, H1A, so this is the resolution authorizing the water improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three, so before we go into all these, we do have Scott Evans at MKEC, he's the engineer for the developer, we do have Juan Foraker, he's the city engineer, we do have our Bond Council, Kevin Cowan in blue suit, and I'm up here if you guys have any questions for our layman, so, there you go. Questions, comments?
Typical run in the mail, so.
We always do this for, so, I mean, that's a, and that's a good question too, because when, it's typical in terms of running the mail, this is what we do for all developments, because the city can incur debt, and when we incur debt and we actually put in the improvements, it actually helps the property owner, because we can borrow money at a lower interest rate than the developer can. So, that cost saves the homeowner money in terms of actually being able to pay off specials in fourteen years or twenty years, as opposed to incurring it upfront with their principal and interest on their mortgage, so that's just something to consider.
Micah, Mike, since we have Scott here, can he, what's your timeline, Scott, on plans for engineering contract plans and maybe construction, what do you think?
So, returning letters of credit, we have plans in the year, probably next week.
Okay, okay.
So, we're going to, we're moving around on this, our plans to follow suit with this phase, right, and confirms with Arbor Creek, second, that's currently in construction.
Does that will affect when we need the temporary note money to be able to start paying engineering contract fees?
That's right. A letter of credit is thirty percent of the improvement, it's something we require and sort of a, I don't know how you'd call it collateral, but not necessarily collateral from the developer, it basically just says, hey, if you guys ditch out, we're going to collect that, and we're going to use it to help finance the improvement, so it's a requirement that we have of all developers. So, this would be H1A, so this is the resolution authorizing the water improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three, so you can make a motion in a second to accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing water improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three. So, did you choose it?
If you guys have any more questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the petitions for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing water improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 Very good, so this is H1B, this is the resolution authorizing the water main collector improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three, and this would be in the same motion, second, et cetera.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing water main collector improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
H1C, this is the resolution authorizing sanitary sewer improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
I make a motion to accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing sanitary sewer improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Page.
H1D, this is resolution authorizing paving improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
I make a motion to accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing paving improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 This is H1E, this is the resolution authorizing paving collector improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
I make a motion to accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing paving collector improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 And last but not least, this is H1F, resolution authorizing grading improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
I make a motion to accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing grading improvements for Arbor Creek, phase three.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sarah, and page. There's a date.
There's a date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. H2 is an, it comes out every couple of years, this is the award for the 2324 mowing bid contract, and there will only be one motion required for this. Get a little bit easier. The City of Goddard annually obtains bids for providing city property rights of way and nuisance abatement mowing services for the mowing season from March 30th to October 30th. The 2324 mowing RFP request bids for weekly mowing of a little over two million square feet or a little over fifty acres of city property. Staff transmitted the mowing services bid request for bids to over fifteen prospective bidders, received three bids, one was rejected and unopened due to the contractor's inability to perform work on the days detailed in the RFP. Staff evaluate and review the remaining RFPs based on relevant experience, project understanding, ability to perform project requirements, strength of proposal, references, and proposed fees. It has been deemed that the best bidder, Hamilton Lawn Management, can perform the desired scope of work and submitted a bid that accurately reflects the city's bid selection process criteria. Financials, the annual cost of the mowing services is just over seventy-five thousand dollars per year or twenty-five hundred sixteen dollars and fifty cents per week. The cost for nuisance mowing in this contract is eighty-five dollars per hour. The governing body approves, if the governing body approves the bid award, the associated cost will be allocated to the general fund, parks and rec, public space, and right-of-way mowing, ten, three, twenty, sixty, four, fifty, eight. Any questions?
That went up some time for the bid.
It, it did, and this was, I say best bid, but this was also lowest bid.
Really?
And so, yeah, there were, next closest bid was seven hundred dollars a week more, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, it went up quite a bit, it went from about two thousand dollars a week to twenty-five.
Okay.
So, and this, this company, I called their references, they moved up, they do a lot of mowing around, they moved their, handled their schools quite a bit, they used to work with governmental entities, got very good references, talked to the owner of the company, and was very comfortable with him, and feel very confident they can do the job.
Okay.
If there are, any other questions?
When does it go into effect?
Goes into effect March 30th, and will run to the end of October.
Okay, how long were you accepting bids for?
We accepted them for about two weeks, and then we did not receive a lot of bids, so we left the window open for a little while.
Okay.
So, to, to get more bids, see what the competition can get.
Sure.
Any more questions? No, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Hamilton Lawn Management for the city property of right-of-way.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor say aye.
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 Case Council. Item H3 is Goddard Public Library Flooring and Bathroom renovations. This one's been a long time coming. Flooring and bathrooms of the Goddard Library are old and in poor condition, the library board and the former director has requested installation of new bathroom fixtures and flooring. Picture's a little hard to see, but these are, these are, this is the condition of the carpet, we've got runs in it, there are stains in it, bathroom flooring is yellowed, it's old, the fixtures are old and stained, just, just time for, for a facelift. Few more pictures here, you can really see in this one, I yellowed that flooring, it's around there, so, kind of shows it's, it's time. Project scope includes removing the old flooring and installing new custom-fit carpet tiles. The tiles were chosen because they're allowing the building to be re-carpeted out, the expensive and time-consuming task of removing the books and shelving. Bathrooms will be updated with new laminate flooring, toilets and sinks. If Council will remember, on January 17th, rehabbing the water lines in the city, in the library's bathrooms were, was approved, and that will include rehabbing the wall behind it and putting, installing water softeners, so that will happen when this, when this project is done, if, if approved. The bathrooms, like I said, will be updated with new laminate flooring, toilets and sinks. City solicited bids for the replacement of the flooring of bathroom fixtures, four flooring companies and two plumbers submitted bids. The best and lowest bids were provided by Jabar Carpet Outlet and Royal Flush Plumbing. Jabar Carpet Outlet bid twenty-five thousand three fifty-three eighty-three for new flooring and installation, and Royal Flush bid twenty-two eighty-five to replace the toilets and sinks in all three bathrooms. Total cost for this project is twenty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents, it'd be allocated a hundred percent to ninety-three fifty-eight-six-hundred, which is capital improvement, library building service, capital outlay. Questions?
I guess, I would have the library here, is there anything else that you guys feel that might need to be done, the library on top of it?
Come up here, come here. You haven't met, I don't know if you've met the new library director, Julie Mills, so this is the new library director, Julie Mills, she started it.
Yes, first day today.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Trial by fire.
Right.
And Sherri was a lot of help, she, they chose the carpet that we're putting in, I didn't do that, maybe I would. They chose all flooring and all the color, one of the good stuff.
And they're doing the install, which is a lot of work, because moving the bookshelves and everything, I mean, that's.
They don't, they, they're not going to move the bookshelves.
Oh, they're, okay.
They're going to do it around it.
It would cost a lot more than twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, and it's expensive to cut the tiles and fit them around it, but it's more expensive to move the shelves.
Yeah, yeah, I think it came in at, what bid came in for that, over ten thousand?
Oh, we've seen, the bids were crazy, we've seen as high as forty-eight thousand for flooring, so when the first bids came through, it kind of shell shocked us, and we went back for more bids.
Yeah.
And Jabar got the same as that carpet for ten thousand, it was cheaper than that closest.
Yeah, right, right, and they were the last on the list, but, yeah.
We waited an extra meeting for them, and it was worth it.
So, I don't think there's anything else we need.
What about the walls in the bathroom, lighting?
Right, are we going?
Those are going to be rehabbed when the water lines are done.
Okay.
And so, they will be all smooth and painted and nice and clean, and it should go well with everything.
We have some ceiling issues in the younger kids' bathrooms, ceiling issues, there's.
Same piles?
Yeah.
Okay, ceiling issues, okay, we can deal with that, I wouldn't worry about that, but we will.
Okay.
Definitely.
So, yeah, and other than that, we just need some tables and chairs, but we.
That's something that I, I have all the numbers on, I was going to talk with Matt and everybody, see what the best way to do that is.
Yeah, so that can be part of the meeting.
And that's, and that's not very expensive, but it wasn't something we wanted to add with this.
Okay, how, how soon can they, if this is approved, they start working?
We'll call tomorrow, and then we'll get an idea, we don't know exactly, because going to the meeting, they have to schedule once we're through, so we can, we can send it out in the five, five writer report, what the scheduled start date would be, and if they can give us an idea of total date to completion, we'll add that as well.
Hopefully before summer.
It, it should be before summer, I hope so.
Yeah, right, we're going to close the library, or, but we'll still be able, people will be able to pick up items, they can reserve them online or by calling, and.
Kind of like, kind of like how you did during COVID.
Right, yes, exactly like that, because we don't want anybody to get injured, but we want them to have access to the library materials.
How many days?
Do you guys, do you have any idea how long that will take? We don't have any idea right now, really, honestly, so, we'll let you know as soon as we do.
Play it by ear.
Yeah, right, we hope it's only two, maybe three days, but we're going to work around the workers and have, keep the employees employed.
Okay. Well, is your new director available again?
Do, do.
Right or not?
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Are you happy to be here?
I'm sorry.
Good, happy to be here?
Oh, yeah, it's been the best first day ever.
We're happy to have you.
Good, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Is this the first day?
Yes.
Two to fire, Council meeting firsthand, just to get some.
Yes, I told you to prepare for a very long day, nine to nine.
Good, that's good.
One as long as my first day here.
Making it part of the record.
Yeah, thanks for guessing that.
So, if there are any more questions or comments.
All right.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of new flooring and bathroom fixtures at the Goddard Public Library in the amount of twenty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Audrey, all in favor say aye.
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 Hey, Council, that was just one motion.
Yeah.
Did you see that, it was just one motion?
I'm bound by law.
And I play loose and free, so, you know.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight I bring to you something that I think is pretty important to the citizens' safety and of the, of the citizens and the property. So, tonight I'm making a proposal for contracting with Flock to install eleven automated license plate readers in Goddard to reduce crime, sorry, to reduce and solve crime. Also here, not necessarily needing to be part of the presentation, but needed if, if you guys have any questions for him, is the Flock representative, Jim Fink, right here. He's a, kind of a local area resident, just lives up just in Maze, so, if you have any questions after this presentation that I may not be able to answer, he will definitely be able to answer that. So, a little background, automated license plate readers, ALPRs, have become a rapidly growing piece of technology, beneficial and crucial to helping law enforcement all over the country, especially in Cedric County, in solving crimes. When I say especially in Cedric County, you'll see later on how infrastructure-wise, Flock Safety has been able to work with the agencies around us and incorporate a lot of cameras that have led to very successful crime rates as far as their solvability. Flock Safety provides an affordable, infrastructure-free ALPR camera system for cities who want to reduce crime within a principle and framework. Unlike traditional ALPRs, Flock's, Flock uses vehicle fingerprint technology to transform hours of footage into searchable databases to find the single piece of evidence needed even when a license plate isn't visible. Flock provides real-time alerts to local police of stolen or wanted vehicles entering the city. GPD currently has an MOU through Flock to access ALPR information, which has already proven helpful in locating stolen property and vehicles in Wichita from Goddard, just by dense passing by cameras in Wichita. So, the next slide here, or the next bullet point, you'll see Wichita initiated a pilot program with sixty-six cameras, they now have a hundred and thirty-five and are installing fifty more just because of the success that they've seen with this technology. Utilizing Flock creates a more unified and robust coverage throughout the region because of the sharing of information and amount of active working officers receiving live data. HOAs and businesses can also contract with Flock. They're not going to have the ability to do the criminal justice inquiries that we do, but they still have what you'll be able to see here on their, on their platform. Other agencies working with Flock, there's over two thousand agencies in the United States, thirty-eight Kansas agencies currently use Flock, and of the local agencies, here's a list of some of them, Park City, Bel Air, Hazleville, Derby, Mays, Andover, Augusta, Colwich, Clearwater, and Cedric, Kingman, Butler, Reno, and Sumner Countings. Did I get almost all of them, Jim? Okay. I pulled this off of Flock's website, actually not from their website, I think Jim sent this to me, and you can see all the other Kansas entities and agencies right here. They put in red Wichita because after two months with Flock, Wichita PD had fifty-six stolen plates recovered, one point one million stolen property recovered, and a hundred and twenty-one arrests made with just sixteen, and within that was sixteen firearms seized. I'm pretty sure that was just that first initial sixty-six cameras, correct? Some stats just from Wichita, from November twenty to May of twenty-one, that was in our, kind of a lockdown still period a little bit, hundred and ninety-seven vehicles recovered, equalling one point nine million, eighty-eight stolen license plates recovered, two hundred and eleven arrests, which were mostly felonies, twenty-eight guns seized, about a pound of, or more of meth seized, and more than five pounds of marijuana and other drugs seized. Here, this, this slide includes a little case study that Wichita was able to document early on in their inception of using Flock. Essentially, what you have is an individual, where you have a car at a gas station, south Wichita, it's occupied by two children ages, under the age of four. That car was stolen at three thirty-eight, so, that's when Wichita received a call for the stolen car with the two children inside. Wichita PD was immediately able to access the Flock camera system, and within, or about forty minutes later, they were able to recover the vehicle with the children still inside. I like that case study because that is more importantly what I'm looking for, for this equipment. It doesn't cover, as you'll see here, it doesn't cover traffic enforcement, this is not a red light camera, it's nothing for traffic enforcement. So, this, what this is, is license plate recognition, it's not facial recognition. It gathers objective evidence and facts about vehicles, not people, so, it's not gathering, let's say Hunter Larkin, it's not gathering your information, it is garnishing photographs of that vehicle and that tag. Alerts police of wanted vehicles, like I said, it's not used for traffic enforcement, it's used to solve crime, excuse me, and it adheres to all state laws. The data specific to Flock is not stored beyond thirty days. So, some other license plate reader companies, their storage is much longer, but this is stored within only thirty days, after that it's deleted. The data is stored very securely on a AWS cloud. This right here is what the Flock camera catches and captures, a picture of the rear of the car, picture of the tag, it's not a picture of the windshield with the driver in it, it's not facial recognition again. It has the plate, plate number, it'll store the make, the color, when it was seen, and when it was the captured time, so, that's all it's capturing. The footage is owned by us, so we put up the cameras, contract with them, we own that footage, we would share that footage with any other law enforcement agencies, just like we were able to add, access Wichita's camera system and find our stolen vehicles and track where they were going through Wichita. Wichita could use ours, and other agencies could use ours. They, they're not shared or sold by Flock. The short retention period ensures that all data is not associated with a crime, is automatically deleted and unrecoverable. So, it takes the human bias out of crime solving by detecting objective data and detecting events that are objectively illegal, such as stolen vehicles. This just. This just pretty much reiterates, it's not facial recognition, it is not personal identification information. The other cool thing about it is it has a transparency portal that if we opt to, we can put that on a website that links that onto our city website, on the police department website. And all the information, I shouldn't say all, information in, in raw form as far as data, not photographs, but our, our amount of usage and queries and stuff like that through the system is all transparent. So this is like a slide that talks about the transparency portal. It's customizable for each agency, it displays the technology policies, which we already have, as a police department, we already have the policies established for license plate reading. Flock has their own policies, and there is an audit trail that is going to ensure that there's no inappropriate conduct that is occurring. Currently, we have access to an ALPR under an MOU with Wichita PD under a high-intensity drug trafficking area program with an LSAG company camera, of which there are only seven mobile units for this brand of license plate reader in Wichita. One stationary right now, and that's out here at one hundred and sixty-seven in Kellogg that will, that we help utilize. There's just some benefits to Flock that I feel are, are much better than, than LSAG. So that's why, especially as you can see with the infrastructure of other people using it, that's why I think it's important. So a contract has been prepared with Flock for an agreement period of two years of the cost of twenty-five hundred per camera, per year. The cost increases to three thousand for contracts signed after April first. Hence why I'm here right now. The estimated time for installation and usage would be about what I've established right here. May or June, if we were to get this approved tonight, May or June could be an installation period. We would start a forty-five day demo period. If within those forty-five days, or at the end of the forty-five days, something goes totally awry and I'm not liking it, we can end it, and they can pull their cameras out. I rather doubt that. July one, that would win, when our first payment for the install and usage would be. I'll get to the financials here in just a little bit. Then in January, or July one of twenty twenty-four, that's the second payment for usage. February of twenty twenty-four, I want to do a reevaluation and provide some, some numbers and stuff like that. But I'm pretty sure I'll be pretty fluid and transparent with you guys up even to that process, so you'll be able to see how positive an impact it's having. And then July of twenty twenty-five, we would, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four, we would initiate a new contract. Financials, the cost to install and operate the eleven ALPRs for two years would be fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty, which would be expended initially for the first part right here, right there, excuse me, for, from equipment reserve. And the next year for the usage, that would come from police admin budget. And if we decide to enter future contracts, then we would have it as a budget item. The recommendation is, is recommended that the city council approve me to sign a two-year contract with Flock for eleven cameras in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Also in the room, I don't know that any of you have any issue, but if you, do you have a question? I have Lieutenant Slaughter here from the Wichita Police Department. And he can attest to, he was actually very, very involved in the implementation of Flock at Wichita because of his position with the police department. So he can speak testimony to what it has done for them. You guys have any questions for me?
This picture that you passed around to us with the eleven access points, with our growth, are those cameras something that we would need to add more cameras? Or would the cameras basically be moved to expand our perimeter?
Both.
Both?
No, I, I don't, I don't know, really.
Because it depends on where we grow.
Yeah, it's gonna kind of depend on what we're seeing as far as how they're operating in those areas, each specific camera, and depending on how much growth occurs. But it's, it's very flexible. I think if we wanted to add another camera in the middle of this, I don't think Flock would have a problem. And if, at the end, we decide we only need nine cameras, then we can reevaluate that, reevaluate that, and then have a new contract.
But they're like easily movable and?
They are, they're on one pole, they're self-sustaining, they are solar panel, there's no infrastructure. We don't have to worry about anything as far as providing utilities to it. Flock handles all of the permits, the surveying, maintenance, and the install. All is covered with that initial coverage cost, which is why that's a little bit more for that first year.
With a hailstorm that comes out and ruins the solar panel or something, is there insurance on, or what happens there?
We replace those at no charge.
Okay.
If, if someone were to damage them, that's more than likely gonna be on us. But I don't think I'd be adding any massive.
We've had five thefts in the history of our system so far.
And that's?
Two and a half years.
Yeah.
All the same area of town.
Do you have a picture of them? Yeah, but you said it's mounted on a pole.
Yeah, that right there is a black little camera on a pole with a solar panel above it. It's very.
How big is it?
It's not very large.
How high to prevent thefts?
Huh?
The size of a football.
So how high do you mount them, and how do you mount them sort of to prevent thefts?
I mean, it's like anything you would mount anywhere, anybody who wants to take something could take it, but where most of the cameras are, are gonna be around people. They're not gonna be up in the middle of nowhere. There's going to be obviously a pretty decent amount of patrol around them, and we're not gonna put sensors or anything on them. But I don't perceive it as being an issue, and if we do, then we'll, we'll deal with that as it comes and arises, but.
So when you, when you say it's mounted on a pole, are you talking about like a freestanding pole?
Uh-huh.
Like its own thing, how high up is that? How tall are they?
Kind of depends on the roadway, but not much taller than.
It's a DOT breakaway pole that's fourteen feet, two feet buried in the ground, and the camera's twelve feet up in the air.
Oh. So do we lease the equipment, or are you sure?
That's what this contract is, so the equipment and the usage and everything, we've got the two-year contract with it. After two years, I guess if we decide we don't want any cameras, or we only want these, these cameras, then we would reestablish a new contract and.
Can you go back to the slide with the surrounding areas and the use of Flock?
Yep.
So I guess at one point.
That one right there is probably.
Yeah. One point I'd like to make, and I've heard about this system before, and I like the fact that we're becoming a part of this group. It's more, it's not just Goddard is doing this, it's a community as a whole that's integrated. Being a police officer is tough, especially today. And having another tool that can help you guys do your job and catch bad guys and keeping our community safe, I think is very valuable. I mean, if Matt says we got the money, which I can't assume that you would be delivering this, Matt, then, right, Matt?
For the first year, yeah, we'll use reserve funds, essentially go to reserve for it. And then going forward, we'll just make a regular budget request, so it'll be, it'll be included in this department's annual budget. So as a, I looked at it already, I want to say it was just like a regular tech services item. So, you know, where they got their other annual software and stuff like that, it's the same kind of thing.
It's just ongoing support, not have to buy new equipment every year or anything.
Chief, you might have said that already, but the, so the communities are all linked together through this service, right? So if something happened, Wade, you know, Augusta, whatever. And if that car happened and come through here, I mean, all that's traceable, right? You guys would know.
Within seconds.
The database, I guess, is all.
Yeah. If, yeah, and, and Jim, or Casey, you guys might be able to speak on this. Go ahead if you want.
About that question?
Yep.
Certainly. So this whole network is all, all connected and integrated. You can share if you want to, you don't have to. So you can say, hey, we don't want to share with certain people. I don't know why you wouldn't, but we choose to share with everybody, they choose to share with us. We also have a nationwide connection as well. So if we find out somebody's coming in from Texas and they're carrying a big load of dope, maybe fentanyl or something like that, or maybe we got a murder suspect coming into Wichita, and it's pinging all the way into town, and it ends up coming towards Goddard. After it's pinged through Wichita, you would know, and you'd know in seconds. And you'd get it set in that way.
I think that's awesome. I mean, our response to bad things happening, preventing them from happening in our town is great enough that we can work together as a county, as a community. That's pretty something.
I don't think we want to be known as that one entity in Cedric County that doesn't have cameras.
Right. Go to that area.
Right, right.
Right. I'm here for the big up west. But, okay, ask my questions.
Well, so how fast do you have to go to not get your picture taken?
There won't be. There won't be, I mean, now that you guys just approved last council for a helicopter, there won't be any vehicles. But I think it rates up to a hundred?
Oh, one forty, okay.
Well, if we see somebody blow past the camera, it was Brent. So with this data, could that data then also be used by like, like MICA? If we had somebody, a business looking at planting here, wanting to know that traffic, would we be able to access that, like, for them to use?
Very easily. It would be able to be shared with. Go ahead, Jim.
I've had that question come up multiple times for economic development. And we can access traffic data flows Monday through Friday, Saturdays and Sundays by camera.
So it also means we wouldn't have to run surveys?
That's an amazing service because to do a traffic.
Hey, we're not gonna rely on a little hose.
Actually, very expensive.
Yeah. There is, I'm just curious, where are there two at this park without location?
Right there, that's two fifteenth and twenty-third, that'll be by the new development down there.
Okay, I just didn't know why you wanted two and there's only one.
One inbound for one direction, one inbound for the other direction.
Okay, I see what you're saying, that makes sense, okay.
And it count multiple cars, like in a three-lane situation, or?
Where, where all these cameras are, yes, they would, but where all these cameras are gonna go are gonna be two-lane roadways, with the exception of one on Kellogg.
You will have some loss as far as, if you have multiple lanes or a median in between.
If there's a blockage, you know.
There will be some loss of information, for sure. One of the great things I'll say about this is the versatility of the system. And it sounds like I'm gonna be like a Flock rep, but, I mean, this is the most transformational technology we've ever had. Everybody in our department is using it, we caught, we caught nine homicide suspects. We've caught, we've seized more dope than, I don't know, I can't even tell. We had a whole stat sheet and all this stuff, three hundred and eighty-seven stolen cars, three hundred and ninety-four arrests, four point one million dollars in cars recovered. The versatility of the system, which I don't even know if you talked about it or not, because that may have played a part of it. Businesses can purchase this too, neighborhood associations can purchase, HOAs can purchase the system, and they can share with you, the police department, if they want to, and most of them, all of them do with us anyway. There's also a program called Ling, which we are starting to explore and engage in, where a business can share their PTZ camera, just their regular camera. So we're looking at like Quick Trips, for instance, or Quick Shops. They can share that footage with Flock, and it goes on to their dashboard, and you can remote in and look at the live view. So the idea is, here you are tracking the suspect around the city, and boom, they pull into the quick shop, now you got a live view of the robbery suspect running into the quick shop. It's huge.
I think it speaks volumes that you wanted to come in, and obviously you're passionate about it. The fact that you're not a part of our city directly, but you clearly want this for, for the community. I just think that speaks.
Well, I guess, do I have a motion?
I make a, yeah, what's the actual, what do you actually need me to say? There we go. I make a motion to approve Chief B's lead to sign a two-year contract with Flock for eleven cameras in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion by Keaton?
Second.
Second by Audrey, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We want to see the cool stuff that comes out of that.
Oh, yeah.
Honorable Mayor, this is council. Each five is to review fees and hours for the season. The Goddard municipal pool is open currently from one to six P M., seventies a week, including holidays, and it's open from mid-May to mid-August. The daily admission pool, pool fees are two dollars, and it has been for at least twenty years. The municipal pool provides a community benefit, but while most are not profitable, they should be sustainable. The pool expenditures have increased seventy-nine percent since two thousand and two, and revenues have been remained constant. Staffs proposing a slight increase to the rate for the beginning of the season, which is comparable to other nearby cities. As far as the pool hours, we currently, we're proposing a change to open from twelve P M. to five thirty P M. The pool manager has brought this to me as swim lessons, I believe, in at eleven, and people are waiting around for the pool to open. And also, they've seen that it kind of staggers off after five P M. and people are going home. Here are some, the proposed rates, just going down the line from city resident, non-city resident. We keep those at, or have been at two dollars, we're proposing four. Punch passes from thirty-six to forty-eight. Season passes, seventy for individual, ninety for resident, ninety for non-resident. We're proposing to stay the same for the season pass individual, seventy dollars in city, and raise it to one hundred dollars for non-resident. Season pass for three members. Actually, what we had before was just a season pass for a family, and it was a hundred and twenty for city resident and a hundred and fifty for non-resident. We're proposing that, to, to change that to three members, adding a fourth member, family membership, to one fifty for city residents and a hundred and seventy-five for non-residents. Pool parties currently, a hundred and twenty-five for city resident and a hundred and fifty for non, and we're proposing an increase, two hundred and fifty for city residents and two hundred for non. And these are all just suggestions, you all can make changes as you desire. This is a comparison to other cities. Daily admission, Clearwater's three fifty, Wichita's three, Hayesville is three. Season passes, we have forty-eight. This is the proposed, actually, on the left, is the proposed Goddard in city and non-resident compared to Clearwater, Wichita, and Hayesville. Season pass, if you skip down to the four-member, are proposed, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five. Clearwater's a hundred and fifty, Wichita's two-ten, Hayesville's a hundred and sixty-five. Pool parties, the proposed rates for Goddard is lower than surrounding states. So I'm open for? Any recommendations?
Will you go back to that first one?
So I'm just curious, I grew up in a family of seven. So after the four-members pass, do the additional three of my family then have to pay for a season pass individually? Or would it be the same difference between three and four?
It, it would just be a season plat, season pass for four or more members.
Okay, okay, so, okay, that's.
How vital is the income stream from the admissions for the operation of pools?
Well, we're in the red right now as far as revenue is compared to.
Do we make more from admissions or food?
I would say they're about the same.
This is not going to eliminate the subsidy of tax dollars to run the pool, for sure. But the idea is just to bring more in line with what other, to be competitive. Because we, you know, we've increased salaries, or salaries, we've increased wages for our pool workers this year, the last couple of years to get them to where, you know, where they're competitive with the other city pools, the other employees of Genesis who are gonna be doing the cool stuff there, just so we can get the quality people we've gotten in the past. in the past. We want to be competitive. So, that's really the emphasis behind this.
And even though the daily admission of four dollars is a little more than Clearwater, Wichita, Hayesville, if you buy the packages of the twenty punch pass or even the season passes, it can get down to as low as a dollar, so.
I know Keaton and Reed were thinking about different options. I mean, is there anything that you're not proud of with this?
No. Well, also, one thing that Angie and I had discussed this summer that I wanted to talk to you guys about was potentially trying to do, I used to work for the pools in Wichita and there was two days in the summer that was free admission to the pool. And I think that, I mean, it was cool. We got big crowds out and that was cool to see. And so, we were going to talk to you guys about trying to do something like that in conjunction with the Main Street Market and have the pool open at the same time. Just another opportunity for our community to come together. You know, in the meeting before the actual meeting tonight, one thing that, is it Denise? Am I saying that right? Yeah. One thing that Denise had mentioned was, as Goddard grows, we want to maintain the feel of Goddard, right? We have to keep Goddard, Goddard. There's a reason we all moved here. Maybe you're from here, maybe you moved here, whatever it is, there's a reason we're all here. And so, we have to maintain that, but we also do have to grow or we will get swallowed. But it's just, looking at the numbers, that's just what's going to happen. So, I think creating opportunities like that for the community to come together would be great. So, that was just, yeah, I wanted to discuss.
Something that was mentioned last year, I'm sorry, Terry, I don't do it. He mentioned I want to bring it up so we don't come back to council. Last year, at the end of the year, we had several residents calling in asking about a dog swim day before we close it at the end of the year. And I think it's probably something, if we do this now, we probably ought to address, we have to come back at the end of the year and do it.
And run out of time. Because last year, we kind of ran out of time and all the guards were going back to school and, yeah, I think that would be fun. And do it at the end, be like the last day because the filters don't have all the.
Before we clean it, it gets everything out of it.
Angie had mentioned that. She was like, you know, it'd be so fun, but there's no way that Brooke will get on board with it.
I'm a hundred percent fine with it. We just have to do it at the end of the year so we don't have the filters full of dog hair.
So Brooke can spend on his vacation days.
You would not believe how fast my pit bull moves in water. We took him to the lake and I was like running across trying to catch the thing. No, that'd be awesome. That'd be fun.
I guess, so in order to accomplish that, maybe a few free days during the summer and a dog day, do you need, making changes, do anything?
No, we can.
I think just maybe.
We can have that out. Our pool manager is going to be coming in town if she hasn't already and we're going to be getting together and she can put a list of ideas and I can send that out in our weekly report to see how you guys feel about that.
What's the current proposal for the days that we're going to be doing in the market?
So, market will open June eleventh is our first day.
Is it every, is it just one night a week?
No, it is the second Sunday of each month in June, July, August, September, and it's two to five, two to five.
Is the pool normally open during that time?
Ooh, that's a good point. You guys open on Sunday?
It's open seven days a week, one to six.
Well, yeah, we'll just, well, there's between, we could just make it on those days, we won't charge daily admission.
Yeah, that's easy enough.
For all four? Or should we just do two or what are you thinking?
If you want a community, I mean, if, if it's not, if it's not really going to make much of a difference to the being in the red and just.
I mean, we're gonna, I don't think the crowds are particularly busy on those days anyway. So, this is just going to mean, we'll need to make sure that we've got more staff available there for it. But, as far as like, I mean, so, yeah, we're going to be spending more, but again, it's not going to, it's not going to change.
On the market? We'll do it in conjunction with the market.
Other than on weekends?
Yeah, it's on Sundays. It's June eleventh, July ninth, August thirteenth and September tenth.
The September one might be.
Yeah, when do you guys close?
It closes before September. They might not even be open the thirteenth.
We'll just do the three.
And we could even maybe coordinate that and do the dog swim directly after it and then we clean it, drain and clean it after the show.
On the thirteenth. It seems like, it seems like last year, they were, they closed because we're, most of our employees are college students.
That's the one they go, they go to school.
Yeah.
Okay, another point that was made from Brent and Aubrey here is we're doubling, we're proposing doubling it from two to four. Why don't we just do one dollar this year and then another dollar next year? So, we're not doubling that, okay?
Sure.
I just remember being a kid and we had a pool up about ten miles from our house and we had to walk there to get there. It's a dollar fifty to get in. Some days I didn't have that dollar fifty. You know what I mean? They would just double in the.
You probably could have found it on your walk if you watched your mom.
Well, one day, one day I had to thumb it. Daddy girl by. I was about to see I stuck my thumb out and take it.
I mean, if we're, if we're already in the red, I knew that this is a subsidy of this city. So, just, I agree with you.
So, twenty-three goes three dollars and then twenty-four go four dollars?
Yeah.
And then.
Free day.
Keep the, keep the passes and all that. I like this, I like this pass makeup.
Yeah, the.
Okay.
Yeah, the passes are fine.
Three twenty.
So, it's just the daily admission or the, and the twenty?
Just, just the daily admission.
Yeah.
Just the daily admission.
Because even three bucks for twenty is sixty. So, they're still saving it for days.
Okay.
Because there's like friends that'll be coming from out of town, you know, this one.
Okay. And how do you feel about the hours?
I like the hours changed.
I like the hours more.
Because a lot of parents get off at five. They can still get their kid from the pool by, by thirty. If they have games, the games are starting at six o'clock. They're leaving before then anyway.
Can we increase the prices, what she presented for the other, the punch passes and the pool parties?
Yeah, the only structure we're changing is the single day.
Are we good? Do we, so on the dog day, is that a chargeable day or is that going to go along to the?
That's a T R.
I say, okay, hold on. I'm looking at last.
It's be towards the end of the season, so.
Yeah, I mean.
And I don't know, do you need lifeguards for that day?
Well.
So, last year, the pool closed the first weekend of August.
I'll stand there and jump in and grab a dog if that's what.
Most people would, I just.
Do it.
Did I make the suggestion? Do it as a donation. Donate that money back to like the human society?
Look at that. We'll make it a donation entry and then we'll donate the money to Kansas Humane Society.
They'd bring on Angie.
So, last, last year, the pool closed August sixth, I think was the last day.
Well, so then, what if, what if the thirteenth was just dog day?
Just the dog day with an admission?
Yeah, because you don't need to ask many lifeguards for dogs.
You're responsible for your own dog.
If we can stamp it, I don't know. We've got to see what.
Yeah, because the liability.
Well, and I'm serious. If you need, if you actually can, let me know.
Because people may, because people may be in the pool with their dogs and at that point, we do have a liability.
Well, and I think we could just make it a rule that, when we did it, so I lifeguarded a dog day at College Hill and one of the rules was nobody's allowed in except for lifeguard. It was just the dogs swimming.
Oh, okay.
And granted, about five minutes into it, nobody was going to touch that water. It was nasty. And then one dog started going down and I had to get in there and you couldn't see it. So, I don't think we can wear our people's shoes. Anything else you want to just from it happens. Okay, are we clear?
Okay, so, so to make those changes, we need to adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule. So, I need a motion.
I'm motion to adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule.
Okay.
To three dollars for the daily entry fee.
Second.
Motion by Keaton, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Not all you needed?
Yes.
Cool.
Okay, item H six, library director who you've met today.
Hello.
Started today. And she's applied for health and dental insurance and will begin on April first, two thousand and twenty-three. Mayor Larkin has asked if the city could provide funds for the new director's health and dental insurance. Previously, the library paid six hundred dollars per month for the director's insurance and the employee paid the remaining portion. The city of Goddard levies three mils each year to help maintain and support the library. The mill is one dollar for every one thousand assessed valuation. The two thousand and twenty-three budget amount to be paid to the library is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. The city council wishes to help fund the library for medical and dental insurance. This would be in addition to the budgeted mill levy amount. If the library did not have to fund this expense, the library would have funds for new daytime and evening programs for the community utilizing the library and the mobile library, purchase more children's books for the summer reading program, add more summer programs for kids, add stops to your traveling storytime and enable the library to open on Sundays during Goddard market events. The cost of the initial insurance is eight thousand one hundred and eleven dollars a year and would most likely increase annually. So, we would propose that if this is the direction you want to go, to adopt a proposed resolution authorizing an annual allocation of funds to the public library for health and dental insurance not to exceed ten thousand dollars per year. And this would be done by a board.
So, since I've been on the council, funding for the library has always been, you know, how do you skin this cat? And there's been multiple different ways. And talking with the library, I think this is a way that we can help alleviate some of that cost for them. Their current cost is only eighty-one hundred dollars, right? And so, setting it at ten, my experience with health insurance, pool cost, we're sure, it goes up on an average twelve percent every year. So, this ten thousand will allow increases to happen in years, so these set in stone on what's going to occur. But, this will be in the budget years going forward, right Matt? Do you guys have any questions on this? Are you okay with this, guys? Do you have any questions or concerns or statements?
How will it be allocated?
Yeah, how will we, I guess, do you guys want those invoices just forwarded over to City Hall and then we pay the invoice?
We'd rather have the ten thousand dollars and then we'll pay the health insurance out of that. Is that doable? Yeah, so we could just allocate the ten thousand annually.
Well, allocate whatever the quote is.
What the premium is.
Right, we would allocate the total premium up to. Okay, okay.
Is that?
So, like this year, it would be eight, eleven, eight, right, twenty-eight, right.
Is that okay?
Well, we'd rather have the ten thousand. Of course. Because we could do, you know, one more bullet point.
I, I don't necessarily have a problem with, I mean, if we're committed to doing ten, what's wrong with doing ten?
I mean, I think, we, my, my family goes into the library fairly often and, and even just like the small little projects that they're, they're doing are, I mean, like, I grew up going to Wichita's library and they're not doing them in Wichita. You know, like we had Eat Your Kid to the Library Day. I didn't even know that was a thing, but we went and they had photo booths and scavenger hunts and, and again, I think that kind of goes back to the whole community of Goddard thing. It sets us apart. And so, I think we need to continue to take care of the library. I'm super excited to see, to see the renovations that we're going to be doing. So, I would personally think we should do the ten.
I just might make a note that if funds are allocated to a specific line item and they're spent otherwise.
Yeah, that's a problem. That's a legal issue.
I would, if you're going to do this, I would prefer that we just increase their annual allocation from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand. And we'll just release those funds at the beginning of the year like we do the other subsidy bit for the library.
But, are, can we earmark, earmark and say if for, up to ten thousand of that can go towards her insurance, you know what I'm saying, to make sure that, like, they don't get a new library board four years from now and those library people be like, sorry about your insurance. See what I'm saying?
I mean, you, you can put restrictions on it, but once the money is given away, I mean, you lose the ability to control. I mean, the money may get misspent, in which case, somebody may have to answer for that and they weigh on whether or not you choose to do it in future years. But, well, like when I, when I did United Way panel, I mean, this was one of the issues that we would regularly consider whenever we were evaluating an agency and they were asking for money. Part of the consideration was, are we going to provide them with lump sum payment or were we going to require them to invoice us on a monthly basis so that we could at least monitor and make sure that the money wasn't going to be missed?
I guess the point I'm going to make to this is, the purpose of actually doing this is to help alleviate cost for the library so they can do other things with those funds. And so, it's not just to pay for that, the health insurance, right? This is going back to skinning the cat, how we can help the library more. It's up to the majority of the council.
I, I agree. I mean, if, if the purpose of us, of us taking it over is so they can then spend that money on other things, then we need to do whatever, we need to do this the way that, that we have to do it for that to work. You know what I mean? If, if that's what our purpose is, is to help them.
Brent, Aubrey?
I think we just need to do what Matt said, increase the funds to thirty thousand.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
That's what I, that's what I think.
And I make a motion to approve it like that.
Motion by Brent?
Pinky promise you to use it for.
Can we include language to release this, the additional ten thousand?
Now.
Okay.
Just do it now, okay. So, motion by Brent?
I just have a question.
Okay.
Because we were going to adopt a resolution, so we will not adopt the resolution. Is that right?
Since it'll go in the.
Ryan, do we need to adopt a resolution?
I mean, we can modify the resolution to provide that we're just simply increasing the annual contribution from twenty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand. Yeah. So, just make a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution, be prepared by me.
Okay.
There we go. I make that motion.
Okay. I'll just draw a second later if I find out that they're not paying her interest.
We'll just modify.
We'll just modify. Modify the.
We know how quickly boards can change.
Okay, so Brent makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Well, uh, quick update as far as the Main Street Market goes. Angie and I have met a couple more times since the last meeting. We have eight vendors signed up right now. We're definitely wanting to get those numbers up, but Angie and I are going to go out, I think we decided next week, we're just going to start showing up at businesses. And we go up to rest and say, why have you not signed up yet? You need to get involved somehow. So, but no, we're, we're going to go just door to door, talk to some people and see how we can get this thing to grow. Also, super excited to be working with, with the pool and doing that. And, and so, yeah, that'll be good. I think that's pretty much all I have for you. Again, if, if you want to get involved in any way, feel, feel free to reach out. Look forward to it.
Sarah?
Uh, super excited about Main Street Market. Loving the dog day. Thanks for bringing that up because I probably would have forgot. It's been six months or something since somebody asked me about that. I think that'll be a good thing for the community. I know they do a couple nights. Somebody sponsors a couple nights where the pool's open to the public, but I can't remember, like Fourth of July, maybe, when the Lions does their thing.
There's been movie nights there in the past.
Yeah, movie nights and stuff like that. So, that'll just add to those functions. Welcome Julie. Glad to have you. Great job to the library board for finding someone quickly. We may need to use you to recruit our city administrator here. I can help. So, but I'm glad we can help in that way too. And I'm glad we're getting those improvements at the library. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Sarah. Brent?
You know, I am super stoked for that car show coming up. I'm just letting you know, I entered the race. So, we see at the car show. So we see at the car show.
I'm excited, I'm excited about the program that we're doing, we achieve, I love that, I mean, I support law enforcement a hundred percent. I love, I love you guys to death, thank you for all your service. Julie, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I'm also troubled, picturing three hundred dogs in a swimming pool.
You said that you would lifeguard that too, right?
Well, I'm not exaggerating.
My kids, please, they're there.
Three hundred dogs.
Yeah, I'm glad to be here, I'll say that every week.
Julie, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, thank you for wanting to come to Goddard, means a lot.
Thank you.
I have three things, community center, we're getting quotes.
We're working on that, I'm not cutting you off, but we're working on, we had to cut a larger hole in the floor so we could get under there and see though.
Okay, yeah, they showed me this hole, I was like, I don't think I could fit in it.
We weren't, I wasn't shitting in there.
We should just do that?
Yeah, but I hadn't come back out, I had no way.
Are you flicking? He's picturing.
So, I've been talking to Matt on general budget on between the library repairs and the community center repairs, and I think keeping in around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, we're spending what we have with the library right now, and so renovate the community center is going to cost some money. We have a structural, possible structural repair, we don't know yet, and we've got a dip in the floor that we're going to have to figure out what needs to happen there. But then we're bringing contractors out. I don't know if we can accomplish everything that we want to do, but we're going to focus on the most important things first and then move down. So hopefully we get all those quotes in coming pretty soon, and so we can bring that to you guys and, and start working on the community center. I spoke about it in our meeting prior, but city staff is working on a really amazing project, a new bond for infrastructure on our roads. Talking with Matt, he, he's come up with a, a figure on the number that he thinks that is reasonable and responsible to spend on a bond, and that's a million and a half dollars for road improvements. And it's strictly designed for road improvements, and so we're getting estimates from Harlan, and we're going to kind of piecemeal it together, it's going to be presented to the council, we're going to discuss it as to what we want to prioritize. So I don't know if all the roads that are, are being estimated, it, it might be under one point five, it might be over one point five, but that's going to be discussed on the bench and we'll piecemeal it from there. One of the projects is, is the North Frontage Road, that's very important. That's going to be my main priority, to be honest with you, is the North Frontage Road getting fixed. How that affects you Russ, and making sure it doesn't screw up business for you, we're going to have to help coordinate, but that road needs to be repaired. Right in front of Ramir's pretty bad, so. Another one is Hawkins Lane, going into Tamanika, that dirt road, getting that, just, it's not going to be curb and gutter, it's just going to be an overlay, and then maybe some possible roads in Old Town getting paved, and, and Second Street, that dirt road getting an overlay, just kind of like Hawkins Lane. So that's exciting news. Getting a plan together to actually get something done instead of talking about it is the most important thing. Now, we can discuss what's important to all of us, you know, maybe we can't do all the dirt roads in, in Old Goddard, but we can talk about it, we can pick and choose and all a card and how we, we think is best. But doing something is important, instead of just talking about it. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing all of the estimates that we can get and the projects that we can get done. And then Ryan posting the job for city administrator after the first meeting that we had, I think we at least need to post it on our website, maybe contact Kansas League of Municipalities, I can do that, or Terry can do that, you can do that, what do you think is best?
It doesn't matter, we can figure that out.
Okay. And then, I don't know if posting it on Indeed or something like that is going to have much value, because this is such a unique job.
Yeah.
But I think we at least need to start with posting on our website and contacting the Kansas League, and then figuring out the headhunter, have we, do we know what we're doing with the headhunter?
No, because I think we may have tonight's discussion to further that conversation. You know, part of, part of the consideration tonight was whether or not there was any change in job duties or expectations with regard to the position that we needed to reflect in either the RFP or what we might do in the way of marketing the position.
I think that the, the first meeting, it went well for most of everybody who missed it. It, it was a good conversation between staff and the council as to almost policy-wise, it's not even really specific to the city administrator, it's more, how does the city conduct itself and, on a day-to-day basis? If a church or the, you know, the library, Chamber of Commerce has a request to the city, is there going to be communication there that it gets carried on to this bench? And so a lot of what we discussed was just a communication factor. I, we have a job description of the city administrator in our city code, so we're not reinventing the wheel here. This isn't a, a new job that we're building from the ground up. I think most of the concerns that have come from the community, you know, Angie was there from the businesses, was just communication. How do, how does a business express their concern and make sure those are prioritized as much as everybody else? And the governing body needs to make sure we, policy-wise, do that amongst all of our department heads and everybody in the city. So we'll start off with, go ahead.
Can we go ahead and have a motion, a second, and approve the RFP that we reviewed at the last meeting? I don't recall when we formally approved it or kind of tabled it until we had the discussion tonight. So if you're all comfortable with that RFP, if we're forward with it, then let's get that approved and we can go about marketing it.
You guys okay?
I make a motion to approve the RFP and get it out there.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all against, say no. No? Okay. All right.
Do I need to make a motion to list it on the city website?
No, now that, now that it's been approved, I'll work with Terry, we'll get it on the website, we'll get with the league, so that they can sit out, and then what we'll probably do is identify potential headhunting firms that we'll just send it to, and they can decide whether or not they want to bid. And my thought was probably to put about a three-week fuse on it.
Starting local bedhunters?
Yeah, I mean, try and send to some local agencies, agencies here, and I don't know that I want to go outside the state.
There's plenty of firms here, they're...
Yeah, you know, what, what I would probably do is look to see what agencies some of the other municipalities in the state have used, and probably just send out to those agencies knowing that, you know, they're at least familiar with the lay of, the lay of the land here, and probably in a better position to bid on it, having done it here in Kansas.
One thing just came to mind, it's okay. We spoke about a month ago about getting sound in here.
Yeah.
What's the progress of that?
I have, I've gone out for bids, I've got three proposed bids coming in, I've, I've actually received one, I'm waiting on the other two, and so hopefully we can get that on the next agenda item.
But I have a couple people mentioned who are trying to watch, and it's hard to see what's really going on, so I just want to make sure.
What's you guys' spending authority?
Five thousand dollars.
And it'll be more than that. What?
It's five thousand for me, I think it's ten for you.
No, it's five for, it was five for the city administration. So, we, we will leave, it's going to be more than that.
Okay.
I think one of the things that the mics is, is picking it up all throughout, and so they're trying to get a system that isn't just around anyone to kind of make it work so people can hear and see.
Now, the microphones that we have are for streaming, and those won't change. What we're looking at is to have microphones that are connected to the speakers back here so that the people...
People on the back can hear. Okay, that makes sense.
If there's something else that you want me to have them look at, then I can.
Well, just to make sure, I mean, when we have a full house, a lot of the time they can't understand what's going on. I don't know if you guys can hear everything tonight up there, but when we have more bodies and that, plus a streaming thing is, is pretty important.
And then that'll include like a, a microphone, a wireless at the podium, and one that can be passed around, I believe.
And the more sound coming out of there, it's going to pick it up from the camera too, so. Okay. Okay, well, we have an executive session that we have to have after this. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session under KSA seven five dash four three one nine B two for consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client, attorney-client relationship to include the city attorney, community development director, the city treasurer, and the city clerk. We will reconvene the open meeting in the city council chamber at...
Eight fifty-two.
Eight fifty-two PM.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to move an executive session, but whoever makes this motion needs to add Matt to it.
What's his official title?
I...
Go ahead, go for it.
I make a motion to recess into executive session under KSA 7543193 to discuss terms of employment pursuit to the employer, employee relations exception to include the city attorney, community development director, city clerk and...
City treasurer.
City treasurer. We will reconvene the open meeting in the city council chamber at nine...crap.
Oh eight.
Oh eight.
Oh, oh eight.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Keaton, second by...
Second. Motion by... Third.
All bets are high?
That is my motion.
Well...